I forgot to show my screen, didn't I?
Why did Naftali Bennett make this announcement today that he won't sit in a government headed by Yahia Lapid? We've been calling him the kingmaker, Naftali Bennett, but this kind of limits his options pretty considerably.
Well, he did tell you right last week that he's gonna make every Israeli a king when hopefully he's elected prime minister. I listened to-
Well, not every Israeli, he's not making Yahia Lapid a king, apparently.
Well, I guess there are a few, there might be three individuals who might be a little bit disappointed on March 24th, the day after the election. But yeah, I heard his interview at 7:00 AM in the morning. I'll tell you my campaign events throughout the day.
I joined Yamina because only Naftali-
The number one thing that people were asking me was what can be done to be able to get our economy going again? You know, that's what the Israeli voter was asking about. They wanted to know about Bennett's plan to go ahead and reduce the corporate tax to 15%. To be able to go ahead and reduce the income tax by 15 to 20%. These questions of the horse race and the kingmaking, that just didn't come up today.
Okay, but it's coming up now. Then if what you say is true, then why did Naftali Bennett make that announcement today?
Well, I think it's clear to everybody that, and we saw after three elections in which Benny Gantz failed, that in order to replace Netanyahu, you have to do that from the right. And we've seen this week, right, Lapid with various statements when it comes to the joint list. Look, we're not gonna be part of any left-wing government that's supported by the joint list. That's just not gonna happen. Again, people who are serious about replacing Netanyahu understand it's about Bennett or Netanyahu. That is where the race actually is.
Bennett can successfully lead us out of the crisis. I joined Yamina because only Naftali Bennett can successfully lead us out of the crisis that was caused by the failure of the current leadership. I plan on acting as an address for the entire Anglo community in the next Knesset. I will focus on the issues of immigration and absorption, cultivating and strengthening the ties with the Ashper Jewry, and promoting Israeli Hasbara in international media in order to improve our image around the globe. Join me in voting Yamina so that Naftali Bennett is the next prime minister of the state of Israel. To me, this is the essence of Zionism.
Hello and welcome to the Yamina Town Hall hosted by me, Jeremy Salton, your Anglo representative for the next Knesset. In this town hall for the next about 10, 15 minutes or so, I'm gonna talk a little bit about my Aliyah experience and how I got my start in politics. And afterwards, I'll be very happy to go over to any questions anyone here has. So I'll start out from the beginning. I'm from Chicago, Illinois, Skokie to be exact. And I made Aliyah a week before the sixth grade. And when I made Aliyah, this is before Neffish Ben Neffish, this is, the year is 1995. And we made Aliyah to Bechemish before it was the Anglo stronghold that it is today. Now, what I can tell you is that we have a, the best way to put it, I guess, would be a unique experience, but also one that I feel, speaking to a lot of other people, is one that a lot of other people have experienced in other ways as well. When we came to the airport, we had to wait for the Misrata Panin clerk to decide what our two dots of who number was gonna be. For me though, as again, a kid of just a week before the sixth grade, I also had an Ellis Island experience in which I was able to learn also apparently what many Israelis felt dating back to when they came to the 50s in terms of choosing their own name. I was there and they asked me what my name was and I said, "My name was Yeremiahu." And the woman on the other side of the desk said, "But it says here in your American papers that your name is Jeremy." I said, "That's correct. My name in America is Jeremy, but the name that I got it might break me laws, Yeremiahu. This is Israel. I would assume that my name would be Jeremy." She said, "Listen, you know, non-Israeli names are very in right now. So I'm gonna do you a favor and we're just not going to give you that Hebrew name. You're gonna stay as Jeremy." And she said, "I see here you also have a middle name." I was like, "Yes, my middle name is Benjamin." She said, "Okay, so middle names are not in now either," and she just got rid of my middle name. And I won't even get into the story of how to spell my last name. But that was our experience coming in, straight from the airport. We got our free, you know, taxi over to the place that we were staying. And remember, we all, we all got out of the taxi and we had a few suitcases with us since everything else was on the lift and we were waiting, of course, way beyond the date in which we had to wait for the lift to show up. And we get to the, we get to the, to the place where we're supposed to stay. You know, we had a rental contract. And I don't know if you would say it's quite amusing, but we knocked on the door and we found that there were people that were still living there. And we were not really sure why it was that there were people that were living there. We made a few phone calls and apparently there was a misunderstanding in terms of when it was that the previous tenants were supposed to leave. So now, here we are with our suitcases. Again, most of what we own is on, is on the lift coming from America. We have some suitcases. We're outside in the street. The apartment we're supposed to be going into is not available. We're pretty tired and cranky from not just the trip from Chicago over to Bechemish, but also the fact that, of course, we have spent all those extra hours in the airport, in Misrata Panin, dealing with the entire process of getting ourselves our names. And as a result of all that, we were not really sure what to do. My dad, Zihon Olivrocha, did what most people, I think, would do back in the old country. And that is, he tried to call the people that are in the government or in the organizations that are supposed to help. As I said, back then, it was before the Neffish, the Neffish existed, so we had the Jewish Agency. So my dad called the person who, from the Jewish Agency, was supposed to be helping us with the Aliyah process. And of course, he didn't answer the phone. And then my dad said, "Okay, I'm gonna call the municipality." Because that's, that's what you do, right? You call the city and you try to see if there's some sort of, you know, security net, some sort of something that the municipality can do now that we're Jews who just came to the Jewish homeland. And of course, the municipality said, you know, "It's not our problem." And what we found was our introduction to the Anglo community right then, when we, you know, on the street, we ran into, you know, someone who spoke English. And then they talked about the fact that there is a family, as most people do here in Israel, or many people do. They were vacationing for the week, the last week of August before school started up north and they weren't using their apartment. And a very nice South African family, and they allowed us, they of course had their spare keys at a friend, as you have in communities. And we're able to stay at their house for the week before we're able to move in to the apartment that we lived in. So that's just, you know, to explain, you know, the culture shock and just, you know, the first day in terms of what my Aliyah experience was. And I think that a lot of you realize how different the old country is compared to what it is that we have here. But I told myself then, when, you know, I was, you know, this kid just a week before his sixth grade, that this is unacceptable, you know, like growing up in a Jewish day school and, you know, coming to Israel, making Aliyah. My thought process was that everyone should be there really with their arms wide open, trying to go ahead and welcome us and do everything they can for us because now we're home. Boy, was I surprised. And like I said, unfortunately, I was not the only one to get that surprise. I'm sure some of you who have tuned in tonight have also some similar experiences. So, you know, from that point, what I tried to do as I grew up is figure out ways about how I could try to make things better for people so I wouldn't have a tough experience that I did. And again, I had a tough experience, you know, throughout my educational experience here in Israel. And I'm happy to get into that if someone has any questions on that, since I'm sure a lot of you are parents to kids who are going through similar struggles. For me, the key was NESTO, which is the version of NCSY sort of here in Israel, under the OU umbrella, standing for New English Speaking Tino Lean. And I'm a very big believer in informal education, someone who went through the program. And then after I finished my DF service, I went back to work there both as a mudreeh and then administrative side. And I eventually became the assistant director of the entire organization. And it was just one of the most fulfilling, satisfying things you could do to be able to give back to an organization and give, you know, the kids in the next generation the type of stuff that you were able to get from the generation above you. And, you know, that brings me sort of as a segue into my experience and start it in politics. Because, you know, the way it is here, I'm sure a lot of you've noticed, there are, you know, these big political families or there are, you know, these sort of groups that have existed for many, many years. How does an Anglo go ahead and get into the system that's existed with political parties that really predate even the state in many cases to the old system during the British Mandate in which they had various elections for the Jewish organizations, but also for the assembly that represented Israel before 1948 during the mandate? And for me, it was a story of, of course, starting out in a new party because a new party needs to go ahead and build from scratch. And for me, that experience was 1999 when I was in high school with my friend who got me involved there with the National Union that was led by Benny Bacon. And I started at the bottom. My story is really one of just a lot of hard, hard work. I started out with, with the first job with bumper stickers. My job was, I went to the person who was in charge of the city. They gave me and my friend a certain amount of bumper stickers and then we had to go out and we had to give to a certain amount of cars. We went out to the junction of the highway. We gave out the amount of bumper stickers we were supposed to. And then we just kept coming back. And it turned out I was really, really good at giving out bumper stickers. I was able to give them out faster and, you know, whatever tactics I was using was more persuasive. So they promoted me to flyers. I was then entrusted with, with incidages, bumper stickers, pieces of paper with words on them. And then after going ahead and going through the ladder a little bit, they allowed me to go ahead and put together my first English parlor meeting. Again, this is back in 1999. And that was for Michael Kleiner, who's now still a friend of mine, but now the president of the Supreme Court in Likud. And then they were surprised, a lot of people came, you know, "I'm this high school kid. That's, that's great." And I just kept going ahead and doing more and more. But my experience was that, you know, I was in high school. And afterwards, I was in the army. And then afterwards, as I said, I was working in informal education. And following that, I went ahead and opened my own business. But in each election cycle, I would be around for the election. I wouldn't be there for in-between the terms. I'd be there for the election. I'd do a really good job. And then they would remember my phone number and call me the next election. And then we got to the point where it was the 2009 election, where out of the top 20 populated cities by that point, Bechemish was no longer a small town of 16,000 people. Is the picture clear now?
You're getting disconnected.
All right, let me try something. Is that better? Avi, am I coming in more clear now?
The last thing we heard was a key calling you back for the next election.
Okay, but, but right now it's good?
Not so far.
Still frozen? Hold on one second.
Not like that, I heard clearly. It's always when they leave that you hear them most clearly.
All right. I wanna again apologize for some of that connection issues. I think all of us are very well schooled now in Zoom, the arts of, the arts of dealing with these things, but my understanding is the connection's a little bit better now, so we'll move forward. The last point I was, I was explaining my rise up the ladder. So I was talking about how I had, you know, been called from election to election, but not in-between terms. And then 2009, when I ended up in a situation where Bechemish, even though I was no longer living there, I'd already moved to Mifasir Tion where I live now in 2006. But in 2009, they just, you know, they kept using me for the Bechemish area. By then, Bechemish wasn't a small town of 16,000. That was already, you know, a city of-
So you're right, network bandwidth is low.
I'm gonna try to play around with the bandwidth, hold on. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So as I was saying. Okay. So we'll go and hopefully it'll, it'll get better as we go. If there's another problem, tell me, Avi. And maybe I'll just try to, you know, restart the internet or, you know, press the button. So as I was saying, by that point, it was a pretty big city. We did the campaign that I led in that area. By that point, again, I'd gone up to ready being in charge of Bechemish and the entire area for that campaign. In that area, we ended up getting 7.6% of the vote when the national average was 3.3%, so it was more than double. But besides that, it was also the best showing within the top 20 populated cities in the country. And they're like, "Wow, this Jeremy guy, there must be something about him." And they decided to go ahead and offer me a position during the term. And, you know, that was my first experience coming in. And throughout the years, I've been a parliamentary assistant, a minister assistant. I've been a faction assistant. I've been a party employee. And starting in 2012, when they opened up the BIDT primaries, I joined over there. I ran and won my seat in the Central Committee representing the Mifasir Tion district. And I also ran and won my seat in the Party Branch Council in Mifasir. Then, you know, I was part of ready of the municipal list the following year in 2013. In the first term, I sat on the City Council Committees of Immigration and Absorption. The largest, of course, for many years, the largest absorption center within the country is in Mifasir Tion of 1,300 people. So there's a lot of work there. And I was also in the Security of the Defense Committee. And I was also the only man on the status, on advancing the Status of Women Committee. I then, you know, already in the second term, I was already the head of the list. And I was appointed to the Planning and Building Regional Committee, which doesn't just have Mifasir Tion, but has the entire region, which includes Telstone, which is a Haredi community, Abu Ghosh, which is a, of course, an Arab village. And I also took up positions on the Education Committee and the Culture and Youth Committees as well. And I think the big reason that a lot of people know me outside of some of my more notable works such as Knesset Jeremy is the fact that I've been running the English outreach for Naftali Bennett since that 2012 election. This is my sixth election working with Naftali. And that brings, brings us to the end of the story of why we're here. When Naftali called me in and asked me to accept a position on the list in a, in a spot where, you know, this time, I definitely have a shot at being able to get into the next Knesset. And that's gonna be up to you guys. And the reason that he decided to choose me for that position is that we saw that all the other parties, even if they might have people who might have been born in some of the Anglo nations. You're talking about people who are not really Anglo representatives, are not part of the Anglo community. They're not people who necessarily are looking to promote the type of values or issues that we believe are very much important for the Anglo community. And again, I'm happy to speak towards some of those things in the Q and A. I do want to be able to get to your questions. But just to wrap up and sort of again, go through my journey here. I'm this kid who made Aliyah a week before the sixth grade from, from Skokie over to Bechemish. I was able to overcome a lot of adversity and be able to make it here. Big reason was because of the Anglo community helping me. And I went ahead and I tried to do everything I could to give back. And I did that both working within NESTO, within informal education. And then already from the beginning of my time within politics, especially at the local level, but also on the national level. I've done what I've can't, what I've been able to do, what I could to be able to help Anglos get more involved and be able to help them with the various needs that they've had. Over the years that, that I've been dealing with outreach for Naftali Bennett, I can tell you that we did a lot of work in terms of being able, back when we had an English Facebook page, to be able to resolve a lot of issues that various people had in the various ministries that Naftali was in the head of or other ministers within our party. And I can tell you that also, besides that, we've been able to promote a lot of Anglos to a lot of areas. I think we're the only party that can be able to boast four female Anglo representatives who are on the City Council, who are all amazing representatives who we've worked with. We have Rena Hollander, of course, the deputy mayor in Bechemish. We have Panina Solomon in Zihon Yakov. We have Ilana Druor in Givad Zev. And of course, Brenda Horvitz in Ma'led Dumeen. And we have many that are very, were very close or are still very close to being able to enter in case there is resignation here or there before the end of the term. And a lot of people who are in a position to be able to move forward within their communities and be able to take upon most likely realistic positions for City Council in the next election. I can also say that in terms of our list, of course, you know, Naftali being, you know, born to South African parents and myself on the list, in fact, that there are a few other Anglo representatives that are further down the list, such as Ilana Druor, who I mentioned, who's number 22. I really feel that we're the home, we're the natural home for Anglos and we're the only ones that have really done what we've, what we can to be able, to be able to promote them and see them move forward. So at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and move over to your questions. I don't know if that was in private chat that was sent to me. Yeah, that was a direct message. So I'm gonna open out the floor to any of the questions that anyone has, has over here. Feel free to, to jump in.
Hi, this is Gabe Aronson from Partisana. And I was curious, I saw the Singapore plan by, by, by Amina and it seems, it seems really compelling. I was wondering if, if, if Naftali and you mean, and you get into the Knesset with important positions, what are the, where would you prioritize, you know, getting into to, which of those pieces of that plan would you want to prioritize first to make sure that you focus on that one, get that one done in the next term?
So, you know, we've been very clear when it comes to the Singapore plan. And I'm happy to also explain what it is in a moment that it, that that's, that's our condition, you know, that that's our precondition in order to enter the next government, whether we're the ones forming it or we have to sit with someone else. For everyone who's following, right, we're in a situation where Liberman won't sit with the Haredim, who won't sit with Lapid, who won't sit with Smolrich, who won't sit with Labor, who won't sit with Likud, who won't sit with Merits, who won't sit with us. I mean, no one wants to sit with anybody. All the preconditions when it comes to sitting with someone are based on their party. It's not based on actual policy. What we said is our precondition for, for, you know, the government that we're gonna be a part of, we need to have the Singapore plan. So, you know, if we're not able to be able to- So of course, you know, it's gonna depend a lot on the Israeli voter. If we're in a situation where we are right now in the polls, right, yesterday was the Channel 13 poll, I believe it was. Sorry, the Channel 12 poll that had us at 13. We had the Channel 11 poll that came out today that has us at 12. Of course, we've had now already five or six polls consecutively that have us in third place. So this is already a trend that I believe is, is pretty solid. You know, with that, there's, there's a big amount that we can do. But it's gonna be very difficult to be able to do the whole thing. For us to be able to do the whole thing, we're gonna need more seats. You know, based on the research that we've done, we've seen that we need 16 seats in order to be able to form the next government. That means, you know, a situation where if we're at 16 seats, most likely the BB block is gonna be under 50 and the anti-BB block is gonna be under 50. And we'll be in a situation where we can be able to promote this plan and tell people, "Listen, for us to form the government, this is what it is that we're gonna have to do." Now, what is the Singapore plan? And, you know, I think if you understand what it is, you understand which ministries are necessary in order to be able to move that forward. We're talking about lowering the corporate tax from 23% to 15%. We're talking about taking the income tax, depending on your bracket, and lowering it between 15 to 20%. We're talking about creating 400,000 new jobs in the private sector by going ahead and working very, very hard to cut red tape, to go ahead and ease bureaucracy, to figure out a way to go ahead and back, back down on a lot of the regulations we have. Some of them are necessary, but a lot of them, I'm talking also as a former business owner. There's no reason for a lot of them. A lot of them are just there as protectionist policies. I remember when Naftali Bennett was Economy Minister from 2013 to 2015. He cut a third of all standards in the Israeli National Standard Institute. And it's amazing to me that, you know, he cut a third and there were absolutely no additional, you know, spike of cases of things not being safe or things not being fair or so on and so forth. So again, there's a lot of things that we can do in order to be able to really cut regulation and be able to ease a lot of the, the red tape that a lot of people need to deal with within that sector. And you have to be able to pay for it. And the way that we see the best way to pay for it is to be able to freeze the public sector. For instance, right now, you have three areas in which you have tax collection going on. You have the VAT, you have the income tax, and you have the social security, right, BTOKLOME. There's no reason to go ahead and do it three times. You can do that all through one authority. You can have different departments, but there's no reason to have three director generals. There's no reason to have, you know, everything times three when you can go ahead and do that a lot less. So what we're talking about is not firing people. That's, that's not what we believe is gonna be able to cut jobs. What we do think though is that you have a lot of people who go off, if it's for maternity leave or sick leave or retirement, or whatever it is over the next few years, we just don't replace them. And there are a lot of places where we can do that. Another area is reducing the amount of ministries. You know, we always talk about the amount of ministers. I know there's some parties that that's what they love talking about. But what you don't notice is you have less ministers, but then you give them more ministries. And it's the ministries that cause, cost a lot more money than the ministers. Because the minister, you know, that's one, one guy. If you're gonna have, you know, less ministers, but for each minister that you're gonna keep, you're gonna give them two or three ministries, well. Excuse me, I'm trying to think, you know, I can't give you the exact numbers, but just to have a good, good idea. We're close to 40 ministries right now in the state of Israel. We don't see a reason why it needs to be anywhere close to that. We also don't understand why people need to have so many different portfolios. So we want to be able to cut both of those together. We believe they'll be able to cut again a lot of fat. So again, to be able to do this stuff, you're gonna wanna have the Finance Ministry because that's the state budget. You're gonna wanna have the Economy Ministry because the Economy Ministry is- You're going to want to have the economy ministry because the economy ministry is really at that central location that deals with various things, whether it's labor laws, whether it's you know, trade regulations, whether it's the 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 various aspects of industry that that are also involved. That's that that's the main area in which you you need to be able to to have those two ministries to be able to move forward. There are other ones, but what we're looking, as I said, is to be able to lower the amount of ministries. One of the things we want to do is connects to our housing plan, as I said, you know, one of the one of the main aspects that I deal with outside of national politics within local politics is that the the issue of housing. And what we want to do is get rid of the housing committee, the the house, sorry, the housing ministry completely. By doing that, we'll be able to funnel a lot of the functions that currently exist back into the either the economy or the finance ministries, and that'll make things a lot easier as well. And of course, some of it will go to the interior ministry. Because of course, that's a central part of being able to build as well.
Hi, Jeremy.
Hey.
Going to put on my video. Hi. So I wanted to bring up an issue specifically because you did reference your experience with Aliyah and being Anglo, and I I would assume that most of us here are Anglos as well. We're dealing with a massive issue right now in terms of citizens of Israel not being allowed in the country, certainly also out of the country. It's something that I've seen all over social media, something that's being brought up by people like Doof Littman and Michal Cutler-Wunsch. And I don't really, I could be missing it, but I don't really see a lot of other party leaders or or people in Knesset right now calling so much attention to this issue. So I do want to ask, is is Naftali, is Yamina in general, are they doing anything to work on this particular problem, certainly for right now and also going forward?
No, thank you for the question, Mira. I mean, Naftali has spoke about it, but I I feel with the bandwidth of everything that's going on with the Singapore plan and the housing plan and the restart in education plan and the Corona plan. And of course, all the questions people want to ask all day about yes BB, no BB. It doesn't get as much play, but but there are a few radio interviews I can forward you where where we do talk about it. And we did mention in a few Facebook posts and tweets. For me, again, as you know, the Anglo guy, I I'm getting, I would say, a majority of the mail that I'm getting right now, whether it's messages on, you know, Facebook, emails, WhatsApps, it it's on this issue. And it's not just your like everyday people. I'm not going to, you know, say who, but but some very, very senior people in 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 some very top organizations that have relationships with the government are calling me and asking me, Jeremy, can you like figure out a way to help me? For those of you who don't know, we we have a situation in which we're still dealing with quotas at the airport. We don't really understand why, you know, I'm saying from Yamina, from our perspective, we don't really understand why. They're not going ahead and going with what we proposed, which was to simply do testing seventy-two hours before they come and then have, you know, effective isolation and a couple tests after they come in. There there doesn't seem to, for us at least, to be a reason to prevent people from being able, go ahead and do that through that normal system. What we have today is a situation which you have Israelis waiting in line. There was a committee. Now the committee is only for people who are who are without the green passport. Of course, if you've been overseas, the chances you have a green passport is very low because, you know, it's hard to get vaccinated if you're not a citizen of another country. Or you have other situations. I've heard of people who got a vaccination, but they got a vaccination of something that's not Pfizer. So because it's not Pfizer, they don't recognize it as is is them being vaccinated. So they won't let them in, but then they also won't let them get a serological test to prove that they have the antibodies. I I would say, I I'm not joking, I think I get fifty to sixty of these type of things coming in a day. So I'm happy that you brought that up. What I can tell you is that unfortunately, we're in the opposition. I've tried. I've made calls. Sometimes I ask because sometimes they just need sometimes it's not even the committee, they they just need somebody in in some place to push one paper from one place to the next place really fast and and stuff like that. You can help. But but if you're looking, for instance, at the non-citizens at the moment, unless you're coming for for a funeral, I haven't been able to help anybody. Based on what I understand, you know, whether it's been, you know, Michal or Ruth, who's also been dealing with this from blue and white since, you know, she she's in the coalition as well. And also Dove, who who does great work outside, it it's just not working. And to me, there's no reason for it. I mean, if you understand the reason of why it is that we closed the airport initially, which again, we didn't think that was necessary. It was because the government said they're afraid of mutations because we don't know how the mutations deal with the vaccination. Well, you know, that's something that Yamina has been saying for a very long time. If you read, you know, Bennett's book, he he discussed this about a year ago already. You know, the danger of something like this happening. But what we said also is that if you're able to go ahead and go about it in a normal way, you you can allow people to come into the country. And unfortunately, and this goes back to the the situation, the lockdowns and everything we've had over the last year. What they tell us is that Israeli citizens are not obedient. And the only way to go ahead and do stuff is just completely go from zero to one hundred or from a hundred to zero, and there is nothing else to do. Our our feeling is that people just don't trust the system. They don't trust the fact that you have people who are out there in the government who who, you know, say one thing. And then we saw, for instance, you know, when I did Seder along with my family. Bibi had his Seder and Rieveling had his Seder and, you know, there was there was a few other, you know, politicians, I'm not going to say who from which parties that were caught doing various other things. Of course, they they like to attack us all day. But what we have invented the situation is you have people who are overseas. There's Israeli citizens who want to get home. They can't get home. They don't understand why. We had a situation where they said, okay, we're going to resume from New York flights. But then they canceled, you know, on the day that they said they were going to resume it. Because they said, oh, well, there's a New York mutation and and we're we're afraid about that. Well, well, again, did you not know about that when you approved it? It it's just a mess. And of course, things are changing every day. That's what happens. We don't have a plan. You know, someone asked me. I was having a diplomatic meeting earlier today, and I can say which country, but they said they're like, you know, Bennett was very high in the polls and was doing a great job. We was talking about Corona, but aren't we past Corona? Isn't Corona like a non-issue? Like I'm going out and I see people outside and why are you talking about Corona? Like, no one cares about Corona. So again, if you're, if you know someone who's outside or you are right now currently outside of Israel and can't get in, Corona i- is affecting you. Any of us who have kids who who are still, you know, probably every week. I I mean, it's I I have a green passport, so so it's easier for me personally, but you you have a situation which every week I'm taking another kid to 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 get another Corona test because of another one who's in the class who who was exposed to someone or or was themselves positive, or it's possible that in recess, one capsule saw another capsule and so on and so forth. Look, guys, you you know, at least for the for the coming, you know, future, in the near future, zero to sixteen are not are not going to be vaccinated. You're going to have a situation in which Corona still can be very much dictating a big part of our lives. Those of us who are parents, of course. And like I said, those who are trying to get in the country are is just another example. And unfortunately, the risk of the mutation. If we do end up having a situation where, again, we have the zero to a hundred approach in which at one point Netanyahu is just going to completely open everything up, but then he's not going to require testing beforehand. Then we could have a situation where we do have a mutation. And then we have another, you know, potential situation of of them trying to to put us in a lockdown. And then everyone's going to be remembering the 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 plan that that Bennett suggested when he literally wrote the book about how to get us out of Corona. So I I I think it's still a very big issue, and that's without even going into the economic impact of of the of how that's dealt with. But basically, Mira, we have talked about it. It's just, it's not a main thing within the Israeli news because it's not, I guess, as important as the question of the horse race and who who's who's going to win the class president election, since that seems to be really where we are right now in terms of a majority of what's happening. I can speak about my own. You know, you came in late, but while we were waiting for a few people to come in, we aired one of my recent interviews where where they're asking me about, you know, something that that Bennett said about Likud. And I'm telling them that I I hit a bunch of campaign stops and the entire day they were asking me about questions about, you know, the economy and Corona. And, you know, he said, okay, well, I'm asking you now because they just don't want to talk about these issues, unfortunately. I hope that that's a comprehensive answer to you, Mira. If there's anything else you wanted me to touch on, feel free.
No, maybe that's why we need more Anglos and Knesset to address these issues.
No, I mean, you know, I I'll tell you, and I'll go back to one of the points I was saying beforehand when Naftali was talking to me about, you know, taking more central role in this election and and being in a in a place where I have a shot at getting into Knesset. We're in this place where, you you know, you know, Dove is unfortunately on the outside. Of course, he could have glicked. He's, I don't know, like number fifty-eight, I think, on the Likud list. So he's not getting back in. Michael Orin is out of politics. No one picked up Michal. Ruth is number ten on blue and white, whichever knows is not at all relevant. We're just, you know, as Anglo community, we've sort of gotten spoiled. We went from having at least one, but for really, you know, the last, I'd say six years or so, we've had at least two. So even if you didn't like one of them, you had somebody. And we're really in a situation where if you're talking to people who are dealing with these issues on a daily basis, it's it's either me or nobody. I mean, I I really don't understand what the other parties were thinking, to be honest. Especially since we're in a system where the majority of the parties did not choose based on primaries or the ones that did still had reserved slots in which they could make various adjustments based on checks and balances. I I can also say, and I've said this in a few other events, we have tremendous ability now for Aliyah. I I mean, you have a lot of people are very disenchanted, whether it's in America or France or a lot of other Western nations. And and they see Israel as a potential place they can go to, but they can't even get in here. So so and I did a few other foreign media interviews in which people tell me they want to come, they want to do tourism. But again, they have this problem. They didn't get the Pfizer vaccine. You know, you got the Johnson and Johnsons, you got, or you got, I don't know, the Putin one or or whatever it is, then. And that's what happens also, right? We get to a point of like, what's the indicator? Are we going to send everyone to to test their antibodies before they come? Like we're in this situation where unfortunately, things are not done in in a in a managed, organized way. One of the things that that I've always liked about Naftali Bennett is that he has clear parameters, clear objectives, clear goals. He also tells you before the election. And I I think, again, if you look at the stuff that he's done before and after he's entered each ministry that he's been in, you can see that he's been able to achieve those goals. I look at other parties and and they recycle their platform because they've been promising the same thing for nine years. So to to me, if you're promising, you know, there are some stuff you can't get done, I understand. But if the great majority of your platform is something you have to, you know, copy paste from election to election, even after you've sat in the coalition and been in relevant ministries where you've been able to get this stuff done. To to me, you have to, you know, ask yourself why it is that Israeli people should should trust you and believe that this time it's going to be, it's going to be a good one. I see that I have something here in the chat. Aaron says that his three-year anniversary, his three-year, of course, Aliyah anniversary is this Monday, Salto. He says, my benefit of paying no import taxes ends then. I bought an apartment on paper and moving in was delayed by several months thanks to the virus. I have a few things left in storage in the US, wanted to go back to range for shipping here, but it was virtually impossible due to the pandemic. Will Yamina support legislation to extend this benefit? And if not, why not? It's a very interesting question, Aaron. You know, one of the things that that we've all been dealing with is that we can't go back and forth, right? We're all afraid of getting stuck. I'll tell you, again, talking foreign diplomats, foreign foreign media, even people at high profile, they're too afraid to leave the country because they don't believe they can get back in. Look, I I'll tell you, we don't have a specific plan on that issue. I would have to go ahead and take that up with Naftali to ask about extending Aliyah benefits. But if you're asking my personal opinion, I think that's something that that makes a lot of sense to me because people are making Aliyah and and they think they're going to have a certain amount of time to be able to exercise those rights. And then if us as a country tell the citizen they can't go and do the various things that that are required in order to be able to exercise those rights. I I think for sure that there there's some room to go ahead and and look at that. I can tell you one of the things that I supported in this ended up happening. There were a lot of fights around the absorption centers, I said here in Mivicer Tion. And and whether the Ethiopians should have three years or four years before they're they're kicked out and need to go ahead and and find a home. And we went ahead and we just supported giving everyone an extra year. And that only applied specifically, you know, to the people in the in the Mivicer Tion Absorption Center, not to the people outside. But sometimes you have to go ahead and make a decision based on, you know, that that area. It could be that that again, we would tailor it to something where people who were in the last year of eligibility, instead of just making it a blanket thing, something like that. But that's something that I would for sure look at. And I would study it. And of course, the financial implications, which I don't think would be great on the contrary, we're not talking about a huge amount of Olim, unfortunately, every year. But yeah, that that's something I would definitely go ahead and and look at for me to tell you outright that I that I support it without going ahead and checking with the entire party is a little irresponsible for me. So I can't tell you that, but but definitely I favor it and and figure out a way to be able to do it because when it's the country's fault, the country needs to take some responsibility. And I I I think it's 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 very clear that the failure of the policies we've had the last year have have really prevented a lot of people from being able to do a lot of really necessary things. I I've heard so many stories, I'm sure a lot of us have all had it of you know, various events that have happened in the old country that that you've want wanted to be at, but it didn't meet whatever regulation at the time. So you weren't able to get in. This is when, you know, you know, the the airports were were more more free or or less free, and there were issues in America or some other countries were less issues per se over here. But look, we're living in complicated times and we need to be able to go ahead and make sure that Olin feel that they get those benefits because you you deserve them. Again, as someone who, like I said, I I I came here, I don't know, Aaron, if you were here at the beginning or was saying, you know, we called our our representative and they didn't answer the phone. There's nothing worse than that, right? So so that's my my answer to that question. Hopefully, that's sufficient. And we'll go on to the next one. Anyone else have a question for me?
Jeremy.
Hello.
Jeremy, it's Alex. It's Alex. Yeah, how you doing?
Hey, Alex, it's good to hear you. How are you?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you. Just trying to get you on my video now.
Yeah, I can see you now. Yeah, the video's on.
Good on you. Jeremy, what I wanted to talk to you guys about. You know, people might not who I know who I am. I'm now eighty years old and ex-leader of Baytai in South Africa. And the guy who brought out the writings of Zev Javatinsky in English. And of course, a follower of Begin and Skirut. By me, Bibi Netanyahu is a total embarrassment. He has got, I mean, Javatinsky and Begin would be turning in their graves. When you hear a guy like Bibi talking about two states for two peoples. Okay, and freezing settlements for ten months. When, I mean, what are settlements?
We call them neighborhoods, but you know.
Yeah, yeah. But this is what our prime minister called it. And I think this Bibi has 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 got a lot of traction. He's done very good things with the with the Abraham Accords and all sorts of other achievements. I saw him today talking to the Prime Minister of Czechoslovakia, Hungary, whatever it is. So he's he's got a lot of things going for him. I think where we need to go is on the basis of that we can offer something totally different. we can offer something totally different. The average citizen in this country cannot understand why uh, Hamas can fire four hundred rockets into Israel. And we did nothing. We go and bomb a couple of empty houses and stuff like that. Okay? People can't understand why a holy site in Judaism, the Kotel, why Jews can't go and play to a holy site in the only little Jewish state in the world. And I think we need to go more on this track to deal with these sort of, sort of issues. And I, I think that this has a lot of appeal to people. When we have to sneak in people at midnight to go to Jacob's Tomb. And I, I, I think it's always been our biggest fault in this country that we have, uh, information, a lack of information. And I think this is what we need to do to just bring facts to people's attention. The fact that from nineteen forty-eight to nineteen sixty-seven, nineteen years, the whole of, uh, West Bank, Gaza, whatever else you want to call it, was in the hands of Arabs. Nobody asked for a Palestinian state, right? The whole of the Palestinian state is a total. There's never been a Palestinian nation. There's never been a Palestinian state. And I think maybe a lot of people now, especially in view of the fact that more Arab countries are siding with us and the Palestinian issue is fading into more insignificant and we, people are, uh, the Palestinian Authority is still paying people to kill Jews. I think now we need to take a much, uh, stronger attitude and say to people, look, yeah, okay, Bibi's done some good things, but let's us now, we need to get the country on the right path and we need to go for things which they can understand.
Yeah, Alex, I agree with you. I think the difference between us and the other parties that are trying to replace Netanyahu is we're not up here saying Netanyahu is, uh, uh, you know, the worst, the worst, uh, Prime Minister of all time and that he has absolutely no actual achievements that he's done. Because again, he's done a lot of good things. But what we've seen over the last year is, is, is that it's been a colossal failure. He was not able to manage the crisis. He made all of the wrong decisions at all of the wrong times. And, and again, it's not necessarily because, uh, he, he wanted to. Uh, and again, whether he was distracted or was by mistake or whatever it was, I don't think this was negligence. Okay? I, I listen to some of other parties. It's, it's very, very easy to see that they hate Netanyahu. They hate him. We, we don't hate him. We just want to be able to replace him because we think we'll do a better job. And again, and you know, I, I, I had this exchange earlier today on social media with someone where I was talking about the fact that we're running this policy campaign. You know, you can tell from all of my remarks, I'm talking about me, I'm talking about Bennett, I'm talking about, uh, the Singapore plan, I'm talking about the Corona plan. I'm talking about the differences we have with the government when it comes to policy objectives. When it comes to, you know, dealing with the entire situation of getting in and out of the country. Talked about the restart of education, talked a little bit about the housing. I'm very happy to talk about that more if someone's interested. I see we have a few more questions, um, that I'll get to as well, but what we have is a situation where unfortunately, again, you know, what I'm encountering, you know, uh, because I'm doing a lot of these panels. And there are a few more, of course, that are between now and Election Day, which is only twelve days away. Where all they're doing is, again, they're talking about Bibi and his legal troubles and his corruption and, uh, you know, what a bad person he is and what stuff he did and credit he took from other people and so on and so forth. Look, what it comes down to is I don't think the Israeli voter cares about that. What the Israeli voter cares about is getting through the month. You know, i- if they're of working age, of course, Alex, you're, you're, thank God, you know, you're retired and you're able to relax a little bit after doing amazing work that you've done, you know, for the Jewish people and the Israeli nation. But for people of working age, they want to know they have a job. It's important to them. They want to know that also if they have a job, that they're making ends meet. A big reason of why we want to go ahead and lower the income tax is, is so that, right, we're not lowering people's salaries. We're lowering the income tax. We're leaving more money in every person's pocket. Now, that's good for the economy, of course, because it's more money to, to go around and, you know, for consumer spending. But it also, it makes the person feel that, that they have more money in their pocket. They feel better about it. They're able to cover costs easier. They stop living in minus, which is something that just so many Israelis do. Um, you know, I was saying in, I don't remember if it was a panel or a campaign event, I was saying earlier this week, what I want to do is, I want to be in a position where instead of, um, my Israeli friends saying they want to switch places with me because, um, what they want to do is go back to America and I have American citizenship, at least until I'm elected to Knesset Bizarat Shem. Um, but, but I want to have a situation which my friends in America want to switch with me because Israel is so amazing. That's what I would like. And again, if we're able to do that, we'll be able to bring them, we'll be able to have mass Aliyah. And that'll solve a lot of the issues that we have here in this country, to have a big influx of Anglos coming in. You know, we just had this week, we were able to get a plane out of sixty Olean from South Africa. Um, you know, the South African mutation. It was not easy to get those people here. They were waiting for a long time. There's, uh, there's a plane on the fourteenth, right? That's how many days from now? On Sunday, on Sunday, that's going to be leaving, an Feshban Fesh flight, that's going to be leaving, you know, from the US. Uh, and they're going to be coming over here. Uh, but a lot of people are from New York and, you know, probably a New York mutation. The fact that we're having Aliyah during Corona is amazing, right? Who, who right now sees immigration during, during Corona? Uh, and like I say, I feel there's so much we can do. It's very tough if the airport is closed. There's not a lot we can do if, if, if the airport is closed. So, so I agree. We want to be able to replace Netanyahu by saying, thank you, we, we got it from here. We got it from here. We have plans, we have policy. We are going to be able to give Israel back to its citizens. And we're going to be able to take care of all of those things. If it's continuing the Abraham Accords, if it's Iran, if it's Hezbollah, if it's, you know, Hamas. I, I think people forget, but the seven months that Nafthali Bennett was Prime Minister, was sorry, Defense Minister, it was during his time that those, remember every Friday at the fence in Gaza, there were incidents. It's amazing, Nafthali Bennett is Defense Minister, that's gone. You know, Nafthali takes over, suddenly
And the tunnels and the tunnels up north.
The tunnels, even before he was Defense Minister, when, when he was the only one in the Security Cabinet who went down to the Shattah and on the ground spoke with commanders and found out about information that was being withheld from the people who are supposed to be making the decisions. But again, going back to the seven months where he was, uh, where he was Defense Minister, Iran was retreating from Syria. You know, under Benny Gantz, unfortunately, it started coming back. But, but, but I'm saying, you know, this is a person who's, who's been able to also prove himself in defense. It's not just the achievements that he was able to do as Economy Minister or as Education Minister. He has actual achievements that you can see based on his time, his short time as, as Defense Minister as well. So, you know, there's a sort of this rule in Israel. You can't be Prime Minister unless you've gone through either Defense or Foreign or Finance first. Well, Nafthali has, you know, uh, he might have not been ready a number of years ago. I can tell you again, as someone who's seen him, I've seen him in many diplomatic meetings that you guys are not aware of, uh, many foreign, uh, media, uh, that not necessarily ended up getting, uh, published or broadcast. Um, I, I can tell you that, uh, this man is ready for the job. This guy's ready to be Prime Minister.
I'm sure. But Jeremy, I think either, either way, we need to pull the people in the right direction. You know, I, I, I think that this is, uh,
Yamina is right word, right? If there's anyone that's going to pull people to the right, you know, Yamina, we're, 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 we're literally moving people rightwards. So you don't have to worry about that, Alex. Um, but, but, uh, if I, if I do understand what it is that you're, you're mentioning, I've had a few people, you know, ask me about this. They're like, well, how is it you're going to? I see they say there is a problem with my connection. Can you hear me?
No, I can hear you now. I can hear you now.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, 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 sure.
All right, good. So I was saying that I, I heard from a few people that, you know, they're like, oh, I don't like you sitting with this coalition partner or that coalition partner. You know, we're not going to sit with anyone that Likud is not sat with. Who leave it at that? So again, we're gonna, we're gonna have a, a government where a majority of the government's going to be right wing. We're in a situation where over eighty MKs in every poll are to the right. In some, it's even close to ninety. Um, I, I just don't see a situation, I really don't see a situation where we're going to see some sort of left-wing government and you haven't, you don't have to worry about us having a majority left-wing government because there's just not enough seats if you look at any poll for something like that to happen. I'm going to get, I want to get, Alex, if it's okay, I want to get to some of the questions here um, in the chat and then I'm happy to go back to you. Uh, we still
Yeah, sure, sure, sure. Okay, thanks, Jeremy.
No problem. Aaron has a follow-up question. It says, following up on the question above, what specific steps can be taken? Oh, hold on, there was something above that. Wow, there's a few of them here. Gabriel asks, one of the challenges of preventing the proliferation of regulations is that each party gets control of its own ministry and writes all its own regulations. Is there any way to rein in regulation government? Why? Of course there is. Uh, the way to do it, Gabriel, is there are two things um, that really determine the direction of government. The first is the coalition guidelines and the second is the individual coalition agreements. If you go ahead and you set these things in stone within the coalition guidelines in terms of the fact that what we're trying to do is cut regulation, um, I remember Nafthali had this formula that if it's, if it's not in place for health reasons, for safety reasons, there was a third parameter, I don't remember offhand, he said we should cut it. Like any regulation that's there in order to show favoritism or protectionist, you know, socialist policies, which a majority of of these, you know, issues are. Um, I'll just tell you, you know, some things as a business owner. Remember when I opened up my business in Jerusalem? Um, I, I needed to get an air refresher in every bathroom. Of course, I needed to have, um, you know, a certain amount of bathrooms, bathrooms based on the amount of space. But, but they had this thing where I could only get the, the, um, the air circulation device from the Venta company. Right? I could not get a business license for, for my business. I could not open my business unless I paid money to Venta. And I made sure that on the top of each bathroom, and of course, they figured out regulations to make me put in probably more bathrooms than I needed to put in in order to be able to have as many Ventas uh, as possible, instead of me going for, let's say, a cheaper or maybe a different one or one that met a certain standard, and specifically do something that was, uh, made by one specific company. Um, you know, it reminds me a lot of here in Israel, there was the cement monopoly where you had one company and they would only sell you cement based on an industrial size. And, and you know, then it was able to go ahead and break up that monopoly. There was the yellow cheese monopoly. Um, but yeah, in terms of regulations, a lot of these regulations, they're meant either to stop new players from going into the market. Um, or they're meant to stop players from leaving the market. Uh, if, if you will, they're like, um, fail safes to be able to, to prevent, um, uh, certain things from just completely collapsing if, for instance, the market doesn't want you to have it. Um, and, and the third one is just being able to deal with, uh, what I guess in Hebrew we would call the shotef in terms of just being able to deal with, uh, the everyday, um, operations of what your business is. What I would tell you is that a lot of the problematic regulations you have are getting in. Where you can't get into a market or in order to get into a market, you have to go, um, according to certain specific, uh, regulations that just don't make any sense. And a lot of that stuff you can just get rid of, um, through making clear in the coalition guidelines that there are going to be three or four or five parameters and in within every ministry, anything that does not meet that.
I'm throwing the thing out. There's not pictures.
Alex, please mute because we can hear you. Alex, thanks. Um, we have a situation, I can tell you also, where we're looking to lower the amount of ministries to about twenty-two or twenty-three. And, um, the ministers, you know, to twenty-two, twenty-three in the ministries as well, by eliminating ministries where, you know, when you have close to forty ministries, every ministry needs, in, in order to explain why it is that it exists, they need to justify themselves by creating more and more and more regulations just by reducing the amount of ministries. Just by reducing the amount of, you know, for instance, tax collection services from three to one, just by going ahead and reducing a lot of the things that deal with entering into markets. Um, a lot of this stuff can be done very easily, agreed upon from the beginning of the process. No one has wanted to do it until now. I'll tell you, because I've been involved in a few rounds of coalition negotiations. For the most part, like you said, they're interested about who gets to do the regulations for which ministry. Um, who gets, you know, a better title? Uh, sometimes they play these games where I want you to move this from Ministry A to Ministry B, so I can still be in charge of that. Uh, because I'm moving from one ministry to another ministry. The way to deal with that is to go ahead and have coalition guidelines that, that prevent you from doing that and explain what you need to do within your ministry when it comes to those things. And, and that is part of the Singapore plan. Um, the follow-up question on that is what specific steps can be taken to reduce bureaucratic red tape? I mean, I gave some examples, I guess. Uh, Aaron, in your, in the follow-up to the Gabriel question, I, I can give many. I mean, housing is a great example. I don't know how many of you have ever need to go, go in front of a House Committee, whether it was a city committee, a regional committee, a district committee. Uh, this stuff is nuts. Uh, I mean, sometimes I feel bad for people. You know, we're at a point now where anyone who wants to put in, uh, you know, you want to close your balcony, you want to put in a pool, anything you need, you need written permission. Of course, there's time for your neighbors to go ahead and object. Um, I'll tell you, especially within the Arab villages, a lot of times I'm sitting and I need to be making votes, you know, I need to vote on issues that I feel should be in a court of law. You know, not in front of a housing committee because these aren't true zoning issues. Um, this doesn't impact, you know, any planning on a macro level nor even a micro city level. Um, I think there's a lot of stuff frankly that, that shouldn't come to me for a vote. You know, that, that's usually the opposite. Most of the time politicians, they want more control, they want more things to come to them. I just look at the fact that there's a lot of stuff that can be resolved or dealt with without, um, needing to go ahead and deal with a lot of this bureaucratic red tape. So that's just one more example. And I can go on all night about this. Um, Gabriel asked another question here. He says, and in the vein in housing, what, what levers do the central government have to push local governments to approve more housing and reduce housing costs? So one of the main reasons of why we don't have housing is definitely the fight between the local governments and, um, the national government. Um, I have you talk a little bit about that again, as someone who's, uh, involved. Uh, because when you're, when you're in a regional council, you're sort of like in the middle where you're above the city. Uh, but you're below the national government, so you're able to see stuff on both sides. And the truth is, there's there's logic in both sides, in both arguments. Really, what you need is a balance between the two. The national government wants to build as much as possible. They want to build as much as possible because they understand that there's a housing shortage. And you have supply and demand, the more you're able to build, the better it is. Of course, you have various forces who don't want you to build because they want to keep uh, artificial, you know, prices the way that they are. But, um, what the, what the government doesn't do, and this is very frustrating because this is what the Housing Ministry should have done to really justify its existence, and that is be able to coordinate the additional things you need to do. The reason why local governments don't necessarily want, they say, you know, we love housing, but we don't want housing by us. You, you, you build in the next city, you don't build by me. Why is it the people don't want to have additional housing by them? The, the reason is, is that for the most part, the national government comes and says, we're going to give you now, um, ten thousand new housing units. But we'll only give you one new school, maybe two new neighborhood, uh, two new kindergartens. Maybe we'll give you one more shul and maybe we'll extend one road and throw in one more sewage pipe. Uh, it, it's just not a serious situation. And I'll tell you, and we've seen this in a lot of cities where, where they have gone ahead and said everything, you know, yes, to whatever the national government wanted. Then you had situations of, you know, bursted, you know, sewage pipes, power outages, uh, situations of overcrowding with classrooms and then putting kids in caravans because you don't have enough rooms within the schools and there's not enough building of new schools and um, situations where you can't even build enough moaning for, for, for the age of zero to, from six months to three. Uh, you end up having almost everything exclusively going to the private. And then you have really bad traffic jams. And then you have really bad traffic jams and, uh, you have other issues of infrastructure. So what you need to do is do everything, meaning no one wants to just go ahead and buy a house and then live in a lousy neighborhood. Where their kids, you know, uh, can't, can't go to a school because. They, they have to send them to another city because there's not enough spots and, and they just moved in and, you know, the, the city has no, no interest to be able to help them. To get in that year, uh, for that school year. The, there, again, what you need is a comprehensive plan. What we did is we, we put out a comprehensive plan, you know. Sitting and speaking with Alex Chiket and again, someone who deals with housing, what we have is something that gives both incentives. To, to the, uh, local governments, but also. Goes to the national government and says, there's more the national government needs to do. In order to be able to go ahead and, and help facilitate that process. Of course, we're also talking about privatizing large amounts. Through the, you know, the Israeli authority to, to, to the private, um, sector, the minute you go ahead and you do that, that will. Definitely go ahead and, and do a lot in terms of lowering prices overall and easing a lot of restrictions. There, the majority of those areas, it's can be difficult to do that. Within municipalities in which there's not really a lot of room left for development. But, but there definitely are areas where we can go ahead and do it. But if you want to go back a few elections ago, we explained that the largest untapped resource in terms of housing. Is, is in Judea and Samaria. And, and there are just so many areas where we could be building and we're not building. You know, if we do, uh, you know, go back to, to some of the stuff that we talked about in previous selections. Like, uh, applying sovereignty on area C, this enables us to really be able to deal with a lot of these issues. Whether it's stuff happening in the center of the country, stuff happening, happening within the, uh, periphery around Jerusalem. There are a lot of solutions you can do, but this, we need to also be realistic and the fact is, is that we're not going to have. A situation where we have a full sixty-one, you know, seventy, eighty MK plus, uh, right wing government, less than Netanyahu. Agrees to leave and gives the keys to someone else and we could. Which I, I don't see happening anytime soon. Will be in a situation where it's gonna be more difficult for us to be able to move on those issues, but in terms of long term. That's for sure, the way to be able to go ahead and do it. If you're able to take those areas, um, wow. If you're talking about supply and demand type politics, you can create completely new cities. And then you bypass all of the issues of dealing with local municipalities. Of course, that means again. The national government needs to be able to get into all of the nitty gritty of how they deal with all of the specific. Public, uh, services that are needed in order to create a new city. But, um, the reason that the entire system has not worked until now is that we've been seeing, and we saw this with Moshe Kachlon. A system in which you're picking winners and losers, right? The lottery system. And, uh, you, you know, by definition, you're, you're choosing who wins and who loses. You choose who can enter, who cannot enter. And, and then of course you can, you can guess, and I've spoke with many developers, the stuff that they do put in the lottery is definitely. The, the lowest in terms of the lot, the, the least attractive, both in terms of location and in terms of space. And in terms of many other parameters. And for many people starting out, that's enough for them and they're happy for it. But really, if we're in a situation where you, you connect that with the Singapore plan. Put more money in people's pocket, they will have more money. And then you go ahead and you lower regulation and you create incentives for local governments, you're able to foster an atmosphere. In which you can go up in the amount of supply to be able to meet demand. And I'll just tell you one more thing on that, uh, just because this is something that bothers me in terms of zoning. And this came up in, in, in a few things, uh, in, in which we talked about housing throughout this campaign. And that is, um, being able to use mixed zoning, but also take a lot of the stuff that is right now designated as residential zoning. And, and do some enforcement there. Because, um, the way it is right now in Israel, um, commercial areas need to pay a much higher city tax. Then, and, and this is a central part of our, our, you know, the electric head housing plan, then you pay a lot more, um, money. To municipality than the residential. So you have lawyer offices, barber shops, falafel stands. All these places that you've seen open up within residential areas in order to not pay the high taxes in the commercial area. They take up houses in the residential area. And, and there are a lot of places where, um, we're, we're at a point now, it depends on the city, but there are thousands. Where a situation now where I think the latest number I saw is, there's an estimated a hundred and forty thousand residential units. That are zoned for residential, but they're being used for commercial industrial or otherwise. So, so just doing some enforcement there. But of course, places that are there for a long time, you can work on a timetable, but being able to, to lower the commercial taxes. To, to a point where there's no longer this incentive for the business owner to also choose the neighborhood residential area. If you're able to go ahead and put incentives, but also work with the people who are living there, you'll be able to open up a lot of residential places. Which are already open and, 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 and exist and are connected to plumbing and, uh, and electricity and, and all you have to do is. Is move the, the lawyer office out of there already. We're going to the next question I have here. I just wanna, you're, you're welcome for, as for the detailed housing answer. This is stuff again, I, I deal with all the time, so. I apologize if I was boring people, but anyone who doesn't own a house or anyone who's interested in housing, I think these things are just really important. You know, we're, we're so used to, again, people talking about the, the horse race and, and the class president. This is what stuff should be about, meaning town halls should be about people talking about real issues and asking for long detailed. Answers as opposed to just the soundbites to just keep, keep things moving. So, so at least I think that's more important. The question I see here from Jacob is, who has the power to get rid of the Minhal is Rakhim and you don't Shomron? Will you mean to push that? Well, Jacob, you know, to be able to get rid of the Minhal is Rakhim is gonna be very difficult. What I think you're talking about is getting rid of the ability of the Minhal is Rakhim to tell. You know, Jews in area C what to do. Because we not, I mean, how is Rakhim has a lot of other functions when it comes to Palestine populations and, uh. It's very difficult to just go ahead and, and get rid of them completely. Applying sovereignty to, 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 you know, part, if not all, is a way to, again, go ahead and take. A lot of the authority, you know, if we're talking about housing, I remember a, a few elections ago. Uh, I was down in a Friday and I said, because you know, my, my geographic area of my region, you know, it, it stops, you know, pretty close to the border of Gushit Seon. I said, and, and if Tally's like, sure, that sounds like a good idea. Why not add Gushit Seon after applying sovereignty into our region? And, uh, and once they are and I'm the person that needs to approve things, I, I assure you, it, it'll be a very fair process, but, but a lot. A lot faster than the Minhal is Rakhim process in terms of being able to get stuff done. The problem that we're dealing with Jacob and, you know. We're all aware of this is that we have four elections in the last two years. And the reason is because we've been having this, this fight over the same questions over and over. So, so again, we, we believe in sovereignty, we want to be able to go ahead and do it. And I just gave you a concrete thing about even how I would be potentially in a position. To be able to help you, although I must be honest, if I am elected to the next Knesset. So I, I would not be able to, to fulfill that process. But, uh, because you know, I'd have to resign, uh, my, my local and regional positions as a Knesset member, but the person who would replace me. Uh, I would assume would, you know, want to pursue the same objective in terms of policy. We're, we're just in a situation, we have to understand it that. Until Bibi goes, until Bibi leaves the Likud. We're just gonna keep having these elections. In, in which it's impossible to manifest those eighty seats to the right. To be able to create a government in which we can deal with that issue. Along with the issues that, that are of, you know, uh, extreme importance of dealing with coronavirus from a health perspective and economic perspective. I think you've been here relatively since the beginning, so. You, you heard a lot of the issues that we've been talking about that are affecting people when it comes to this stuff. I was having an argument with, uh, with Sim Karatman from the Smorish Party. One of the panels, he was saying that, you know, I'm giving up on sovereignty and whatever. And I'm telling him like, what, what good is it for me to apply sovereignty and, and deal with, you know, the issues, for instance, of the Minhal is Rakhim, which you're mentioning Jacob. But then be i- in a position where, where the person doesn't have a job and then he can't build a house. Or he can't pay for the sheputzim or the extra floor that, that he just asked for, for approval, meaning. What, what good is, is, is applying sovereignty if you can't do anything with it? You need to make sure you have a job. You have to make sure that you're healthy, right? You know, i- if we're gonna still be in a situation where we, we can't. You, you know, we, we can't, uh, move forward on a lot of the things we need in terms of being able to getting, uh, building materials. Again, just as someone who's dealing with housing right now, there are various issues that we're having. Due to, to various problems and workforce in other countries. Even if Israel is in a position where they're ready to, to start building, if you're relying on certain materials coming in from certain countries or just not working at the moment. There's not a lot you can do. You have to wait for the imports to, to come back. So, you know, long story short. There's a lot of stuff we can do with the Minhal is Rakhim. It is directly connected to our ability to be able to apply sovereignty. Unfortunately, our ability to be able to do so within the next government, if you're looking at the polls right now. I- is not really, you know, something that, that looks like is, is gonna be doable. That is something that we want to be able to do. The first thing we need to do is be able to get us out of the rut we're in, out of the chaos we're in. We have to make sure that Israel is, is led again by actual policy. Instead of the situation, like I said before with the airports, where they're changing it three, three times within a week. Where New York can go, then they can't go, then they can go, but then you can go if you're making Aliyah, but then you can't go if you're a regular Israeli. You, you need to have very, very clear guidelines. You know, one of the things in economy is, you know, um, confidence. Right? You, you want to have investor confidence, you want to have consumer confidence. You, you want. To have the ability to know the people who are making the decisions know what they're doing. When we went into the second lockdown for one reason and then we left it for another. And then in the third re- lockdown, we ended up, you know, for, for a different reason. Uh, uh, I mean, I, I gave this example in my previous town hall meeting, but. We all learned what the R was, except the R kept changing. The R at the beginning, the parameter was the amount of, um. Total Corona cases, then it was the amount of serious Corona cases. First, it was a absolute number, then it was a percentage number based on the amount of tests being taken. And then, uh, it went from a one day, uh, one day total. You know, average to, to a three day rolling number to, to a seven day rolling number. So, so you can talk about the R and if it's one point or zero point, whatever, but if you're gonna keep changing the parameters in terms of how you determine things. It's, it's very problematic. If you go to a lockdown, you have to explain why you're going to lockdown. You have to also explain what are the parameters in which you will leave the lockdown. You, you know, people would ask me, again, I, I have these, these meetings. And, and foreign, foreign diplomats would ask me, I don't understand, you're, you're telling me that the government is waiting to have a meeting. To determine why they would get out of the lockdown? So if you don't know what the parameters are for getting out of the lockdown, then why are you in the lockdown? Well, of course, that happens when you change the reason, right? At one point, the reason was, uh, because, um. There were not enough hospital beds. And then the reason was that, um. Uh, we're waiting for a vaccine and they said, oh no, that's gonna take too long. It's not gonna be because of that. We're doing that to, to, to lower the curve, but it doesn't need to be zero. It's enough that it's, it's low enough and then we'll be okay. You can't do that. There, there's no confidence. People, you know, after spending the last year, a majority of it at home. And unlike a lot of people who, who, uh, in the States could, you know, maybe, uh, at least at times go out and, and travel, you know, at nature. There were times we couldn't leave two hundred meters from our house without getting a, um, fine. From the government for doing that. Sometimes the playgrounds are open, sometimes they're closed. Sometimes you can go for a jog, sometimes you can't. Sometimes you can fly out of the country. Sometimes you can go to Abu Dhabi, but you can't go to other countries. Again, what, what you want to have is you want to have confidence and if we have a, a government. In which we, uh, form it, we'll be able to go ahead and bring that confidence back and then hopefully be able to, to deal with those issues as well. Jacob asks, uh, who do I think could replace Bibi in the Likud? I don't know. I feel today Bibi is Likud and Likud is Bibi. Uh, I really don't see much of the difference anymore between the two of them. At least I can tell you based on polls that I've seen, uh, some of them, you can check back on, uh, surgeon Knesset Jeremy. When you're looking at, um, post Netanyahu Likud, for the most part, you're looking at a party that's in single digits. Some of the more popular leaders, they might get as much as twelve seats, but, um. But, but there's just not much more there. So I don't even really know who, who, who matters in terms of long term, who takes over for the Likud. And when it comes to Netanyahu leaving, I, I don't see him ever resigning. I don't see him ever naming that successor. One of the things I was talking with a few, uh, uh, in rival parties, a, a few other campaigners. And, and there's this consensus that they expect that Netanyahu at a certain point before the election will announce that this is his last election. Um, I don't know if you guys know this, but he's done this in almost every election, not the last three because. You know, it's one election after election without a resolution. But, uh, this is something he would say that this is my last election, then of course he would go back on. I, 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 I don't think that, uh, I can give you a name. I, I can tell you just, you know, in terms of, I have a lot of friends within Likud who are MKs. Some of them were parliamentary assistants like me and they grew up the ranks and, uh, they, they got there, uh, before I did, if you will. They have no idea who's gonna win. You know, some people tell you it's Israel Kats because he's really strong. Within, uh, the mechanism, you have other people say it's Yuli Edelstein. After all, he was number two on the Likud list. Because he finished number one in the MK race in the last primary. If people say, well, if Gideon Sar comes back, maybe he could. There are people who say maybe Gilad Erdan, others say Miri Regev, Nir Bar Khat sure thinks that, that, that he can take it as well. I know probably twelve to fourteen, maybe even fifteen Likud MKs that are planning to run. Just some other people who I don't expect to win, you know, Avi Dichter, someone who said that he's gonna run. Tzachi Negbi said that he's gonna run, Yuval Steinitz has said he's gonna run. It's, it's gonna be a situation where. It, it's gonna be complete free for all. It's very difficult to know who's gonna come out of there. And like I said, because it's just so much associated with Likud. I, I, I don't even necessarily know it matters who comes out of it. One of the things that I am sure about. And that's after seeing, you know, Lieberman split from Likud and, and Kachlon split from Likud before going back in, of course, and then. Just, you know, going back home, Gideon Sar splitting from Likud. Whoever does win the Likud primary, they're not gonna be able to have Likud the, the way that it is today. Uh, Likud is gonna go into pieces, um, based on whatever happens after Netanyahu leaves. That's just what it seems is, is gonna happen. That looks like I've gotten to all of the questions, uh, in the chat room. Uh, we're getting towards the end of the evening. Is, uh, is there any other questions that anyone has on the Zoom or does? Anyone want to prefer to use the chat since? Quite a few of you said that you did. I know Alex, I think you said you had wanted to come back and circle. I'll give thirty more seconds for someone to, to jump in. If not, I'll, uh, I'll wrap things up, uh, with my elevator pitch at the end, as they say.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I, yes, I can.
Uh, good. Battling to get back on the Zoom thing, okay. Looks like I'm back Jeremy.
You're back Alex, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna have the last question, I'm gonna answer that, then I'll. Wrap up and, and I'll just say before you ask your question, I want to thank everyone for, for spending your, your evening with me. It's very much appreciated. Please Alex, ask your question.
Okay, the question that maybe instead of talking about Bibi and, and who, who the alternative might be. The, the question we need to do is to ensure people, especially with what's happening now after the American elections. I mean, the best Jew in the world that we ever had was Donald Trump. Okay, and he did amazing things for us. And, and now I think a lot of people are fearful and they need to know that there's a strong party on the right. Which will draw the Likud into that. Direction, a proud, generous, fierce. Party which is prepared to stand for Jewish rights and Jewish.
So, you, you know, I, I hear what you're saying Alex. I, I think, uh, it, it's interesting that right in every election. People ask, well, you know, who do the Americans want, right? And if it's a Republican. President, then they're guessing it's probably someone on the right. And if it's a Democrat president, it's probably someone on the left. Um, I think the Americans have been very quiet. It's very interesting, right? But they've. Um, it's very interesting, right? But they've been very quiet this election. This is probably the most quiet they've ever been. We remember the various presents that, you know, Trump tried to give Bibi in every election uh, campaign. Uh, there there's no presence that that Joe Biden is gonna be giving Netanyahu. Um, we know, we we know that that's Iraqi. That is quite a rocky relationship. Uh, we also, we don't see, it's very interesting, we don't see him going to embrace the Ayer Lepid. Uh, I mean, I remember, again, as as a younger boy, uh, I remember Bill Clinton coming and campaigning on behalf of Shimon Paris, you know, back in the nineties. Um, I I remember various things that Obama tried to do uh, to help various contenders against Netanyahu. We're in a place where I I think for the first time in a very long time. And this is something I've always said in in my meetings, not just with Americans, but with everyone else. Respect our democratic wishes. And I think America is is seeing this one out. And I I I think that one of the things that's very frustrating for Netanyahu is that he's not able to, you're mentioning beforehand in in your previous question, how he's bringing various European leaders uh, one by one, he he's flying them in. Of course, Israelis who want to come to vote, he's not allowing them to come in, but he's bringing in various uh, uh, European leaders to come and sit and and take great pictures with him. And and that's great. Um, that's nice, but what it comes down to is that for the most part, uh, I would say just about everyone is waiting to see what happens. And the fact that everyone is waiting to see what happens, Alex, shows that um, that that no one really knows what's gonna happen. I I I think that one of the things that's interesting to me, we've never had four candidates run for prime minister before. We've had three. You know, I I remember the ninety-nine election, I I talked about my start. You know, in politics, that that election was Barack and Itzik Mordechai along with Netanyahu. Um, the first time Netanyahu lost an election. So you know, it it has happened, Alex. People forget it, but Netanyahu is not undefeated. He's not unbeatable. It's happened. Uh, but this is for first time you have uh, four candidates. I think it's very possible, um, you you know, we did see the Gideon Sar in at nine seats already hitting single digits in in the channel thirteen poll, but but also in the channel thirteen, channel twelve, channel eleven, and all of the polls and all of the TV channels were in third place. He's already in fourth place and some of them, he's getting close to fifth place. I think once this field narrows uh, from a four man race to a three man race, which is something that that I think is only gonna happen maybe about five days before the election. Right? Right now, we're twelve days before the election. I I think this is something that's gonna still play out for another week. Um, but I think when we get to less than a week before the election, about five days or so, we see those last few polls and and really those last few polls, they they have a very lasting impression. I get to see the private polls, right? I'm Knesset Jeremy, but the majority of people do not get to see that. And and they end up making their their final decisions based on that. I think when they're looking at the 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 three options there at the top, uh, there are a lot of people who say, um, I'm right wing. Uh, I I I just can't vote for Netanyahu. There are various reasons why they can't. Whether it's because of Corona, whether they think that, you know, it's been too long, you know, again, democratic values, term limits, whatever it is. Um, and 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 once we're at that point where Gideon Sar is not even a viable candidate anymore, um, I I do expect that we'll get, we'll get a big bump from that. I do think a lot of people also, once they realize that, yeah, you're Lepid, the only pathway that he has and and he hasn't ruled this out, is being able to sit with the joint list. You know, I I was in a panel a couple of days ago and I I asked the Ashitid candidate, what he thought about the fact of the next time we need to do something in terms of an operation in Gaza, the next time that we have to uh, um, you know, respond to something that's done by Hezbollah up in 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 the northern border. What's gonna happen if i- if you have a government that's that's relying on the joint list? Again, uh, remember we're right, but I'm saying, Alex, I I agree with you. I agree with you that's the point.
Naftali has been so strong. Naftali has been so strong and we, this is what we need to push. The strength of Naftali and of 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 the party to to pull Israel to where it needs to go. Sorry for interrupting.
No, it's fine. You know, uh, you know, I'm I'm reading this stuff in in the chat, you know, I'm I'm seeing a lot of thank yous, uh, a lot of compliments, a lot of people saying they want a lot more than sixteen. Uh, I appreciate everyone uh, uh, going ahead and saying good things there. Uh, like I said, you know, I I have a good friend, Ilana Dour, who's another Anglo twenty-two. Who knows, we could be the the surprise of the election. Um, back in two thousand thirteen, almost all the polls had Yeshitid in single digits. There was one lone poll that had Yeshitid at thirteen seats. Uh, five days before the election, they got nineteen. They were the surprise of that election. I really hope that we're the surprise of this election. I really hope that that again, a lot of people go ahead, they look at Naftali. They look at me, they look at the rest of the list. And again, they say, you know, we can't go Lepid, we can't go Bibi, we gotta go Bennett. And as you know, throughout this entire evening, I've talked about policy, I've gone very much in depth. It's not what you're used to from a town hall meeting. You're used to hearing people, uh,
Well, look at what, well, look at what.
Thank you, Alex. You know, the the you're used to hearing people slander or again, talk about the horse race or whatever. But one of the things that is important to do is contrast, and that's just why I'm spending a couple of minutes on it. Um, and and I'm happy that no one asked any questions specifically about that tonight. That makes me feel good and and about the campaign that we're doing. What it comes down to is, once this is a three, you know, person race, we're in a position, we're in a very unique position, when we are the only ones that are not being boycotted by any of the key players. And we're not boycotting any of the key players. We're we're really the only ones that can form a stable government. Netanyahu does not have sixty-one. Lepid does not have sixty-one either. Bennett does have sixty-one. The question of why people say Bennett can't form a, you know, a government is because he's in third place, because he's uh, right now at thirteen seats in the polls. But if we're the surprise of the election, if a lot of people who are thinking about a lot of these other parties, if it was Smot Rich or Gideon Sar or, you know, um, maybe some of these uh, parties that are uh, under the threshold at the moment. Uh, people, I don't know if you remember, but Chaimam Salim from Amshalem is running, Somit is running again. Uh, um, you have a lot of these type of parties, you have the Zalika party, the new the new economic party that's running. If all these people go ahead and they they jump to us, um, we really have a situation here where we can get twenty plus seats. We can for sure be the second largest party. And and when that happens, if that happens, you know, with your help, we'll be able to form a government. You know, and that's always one of the things I don't understand, like, i- if if you don't like Bibi, you know, I I'm asking all these people, like, why are you voting for Lepid? Because Lepid can't form a coalition. It's it's just very simple, guys. We cannot sit with Lepid. We 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 just can't. He he's with the joint list. You just can't do that. If we get the votes, we have the ability to get parties that that Lepid can never get. And we have the ability to go ahead and form a government with a strong right wing backbone. And and you know, going back to some of the stuff I was saying with, you know, sovereignty and uh, and um, you know, the Minhalas Rakhim. Look, guys, if you give us forty seats, hey, it's not gonna happen, right? But if you give us forty seats, I promise you, we can do sovereignty. I'm just being a realistic guy. I'm being a realistic guy. And you know, I'm telling you what we can do with the amount of support that we have. So you know, to to go ahead and wrap things up, and again, I I I want to thank each and every one of you, especially those of you who are here for the entire uh, evening. I want to thank again Avi for dealing with all of the technical aspects. But what comes down is like this. You know, we are twelve days away from from having an actual chance to change the direction in which this country is going. How about for once, we go ahead and we do something else? How about this time we vote for government that actually cares about us? How about we vote for people who actually have concrete plans? Instead of just going ahead and doing copy paste from their platform from election to election? There's a reason why Bennett and Shekhead were voted in the last functioning government back from twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, the two most popular ministers, because they set objectives. And they actually met them. And then they had to write a different platform for new objectives for the next election. So, you know, if you want to go ahead and hear more information, please feel free to go ahead and uh, reach out to me privately. But it would be my absolute honor if you guys went ahead and voted bet for Bennett, bet for Yamina, so that we get that little bit extra to be able to push me over. And hopefully, like I said, you know, if it becomes an avalanche and we become a surprise of the election, uh, you you know, we'll be able to go ahead and and really just implement everything that I've talked about. So, I want to thank you again all for for tuning in and remember, bet for Bennett. Thanks, everybody.